At this time, I would like to call order the meeting of the Human Services Committee. We could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I can have the clerk take the roll, please. Certainly. Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Turello?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Seeing no additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda, I'll accept a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have a citizen wishing to be heard this evening, Blaine Wilson?
Good evening, distinguished members of the Board, Administrator Hepting. My name is Blaine Wilson. I'm presently a network technician assigned to the courthouse. And I would like to talk a little bit about some of the items that I feel that might be a drain on the physical resources of the county. I'm a company man. I'm a firm believer that our jobs as public servants is to improve as much as we can the well-being of the environment and its citizens of this county, to enhance the services that we provide. And I'm very proud to provide services to the judges and the prosecuting attorney's office, public defender's office, and anybody that comes into the courthouse. But I did want to bring to your attention some items that might be a drain on the county. One is the VDI project. For those who don't know, it's a virtual desktop infrastructure, basically dummy stations that everybody has. In my 28 years of doing IT, this appears to be the worst deployment that I've ever seen, with printing issues, scanning issues, icons moving to the left for no reason, system crashing. A more traditional PC server environment would be more beneficial and supportive of the people who provide the services to citizens in the county. With regards to IT service, we appear to be more reactive than proactive. Outlying areas like the KPEC Library, Yale, Memphis, sometimes have half to two-thirds of their stations down. There are some network issues, but that's related to St. Clair Risa. But there are times in my discussions with Allison Arnold that the library feels like it's a second-rate customer. There's also a waste of paper. For some reason, the default appears to be two-sided printing instead of one-sided printing. A lot of the documents the county prints out are legal, and the state sort of frowns on two-sided printing. In addition, in talking with various managers and directors, if they print out a two-sided sheet of paper, they actually have to copy each side, so they're actually using three sheets of paper, and they throw away the double-sided paper. That could add up to thousands, if not tens of thousands of dollars of waste. But not to be all negative, I actually wanted to express my desire to make a donation to the Board. When I first got to the county a couple of years ago...
I'm gonna have to cut you off real quick, so...
Okay.
You get three minutes. Finish up, please.
I would basically like to donate 3D graphics and the community initiative campaign draft that I had basically created with Vice Chair Baldwin and Administrator Hepting in mind. Thank you very much.
There are no other citizens wishing to be heard at this time. Moving on, any updates this evening from all the commissioners? None? Any conceptual initiatives tonight? None. No old business, moving on to new business. Item 7A, the 2024 Memorandum of Agreement, the MSU Extension Services in St. Clair County?
So moved.
Support. Baldwin? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Phil's here, so we're gonna hear from Phil.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for recommending and supporting our MOA for 2024. I wanted to just say that it's been a pleasure to serve as an interim district director for the last four months, and I have next to me our new district director for MSU Extension, Carly Creacher, who is from Tuscola County. She's going to be taking over yesterday, so I'm not displeased on that, I'm actually happy to pass the torch to her, but I thought I'd give her an opportunity to introduce herself, and if you have questions or comments, to direct them to her.
Man, I'm not sure I can answer any hard questions, but I can tell you a little bit about myself. I've been with MSU Extension for about nine years now. I started as a SNAP Ed Community Nutrition Instructor based in Tuscola County and covering programming in Tuscola and Lapeer Counties. And then for the past about four-ish years, I've been a supervising educator and supervised a team of the Community Nutrition Instructors. So, like Phil said, yesterday was my first official day in this role, so I will be housed in the Tuscola County Office still, but serving all five counties in the thumb.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions while we have her here?
Are you a M grad?
No. No offense to anyone who is.
I make jokes. My daughter graduated Tom Brady, and my brother graduated MSU, and he was an instructor or teacher at MSU years ago.
Oh, good. Go Green.
Thank you. Item B, the library appointment? The library board appointment? Motion to move that to the full board?
Make motion, send it to the full board. Second.
Oh, the candidates are here? That's great. Would you like to come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Did you answer tough questions?
Depends on who's asking.
You gotta be consistent, you know?
There are two. So Elizabeth Buckley, you wanna start?
Hello, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Buckley, and I just want to say first off, this is my first time wearing a necklace in one and a half years. I feel pretty right now. I'm a one-and-a-half-year-old, copper jewelry. And I have a two-year-old, or excuse me, a four-year-old, and I live in Yale, Greenwood Township. I'm sorry, Greenwood Township. I always say Yale because nobody knows where Greenwood Township is. So anyway, I have extensive educational background as far as literature is concerned. I have an elementary education degree, elementary language arts degree, and early childhood education degree. I formally worked at Blue Water Community Action for four years. I was part of their Early Learning Literacy Initiative and Campaign. I am currently involved with the St. Clair County Risa Parent Coalition, and we are promoting our Talking is Teaching. And formerly, I was the market manager for the City of Yale Farmers Market, and I was promoting the Dolly Parton Reading Library, as well as all of the other initiatives with Risa. That's what I was promoting mostly, because that's all the literature I had at the time. I'm a firm believer that early learning is key to long growth. Like, that is where it starts, and I'm really, really adamant about getting involved with that. I have an extensive library for my kids. You'd probably think that's all I have, is kids' books, but I do have some adult literature, too. But I'm really excited to have this opportunity to possibly be a part of my community and give back to them and be a voice for them. I want to be engaged, I want to be involved, and I want to give everybody a voice. So I'm hoping that I can be a good representative for my community and... Little nervous. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll have Sarah Jones come up.
Hello. I'm real tall, so... My name is Sarah Jones. I live in Kenokee. I have a master's degree in library and information science and worked in the library field for about 20 years. I've done every job in the public library, from Shelver to library director. I have a lot of postgraduate management and administration certificates and that as well. I worked mostly in youth and teen services. In 2014, I actually won a statewide award for Excellence in Service to Kids and Teens, the PLETS Award. I no longer work in libraries right now. I am Executive Director of Mid-City Nutrition, the Soup Kitchen in Port Huron. I guess that's a lot of my library stuff. I no longer work in libraries. I really took on a more nonprofit administrative role after being a library director for a while, but I still care a lot about libraries and the people who work there and the people who use them. A countywide system isn't super familiar to me. I've worked mostly for district libraries, so it'd be something a little bit new to me, but I'm a library user. Don't check my account because my books are late. I'm excited to be an advocate for rural services now that I myself am a rural user and mostly digital services user, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Sarah?
I was promised hard-hitting questions.
I wasn't prepared.
No, no. Thank you. So what'll happen is at the full board meeting, we'll take a vote, and we'll know after that meeting the outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending tonight. We'll move on to item 7C, the library contract approval request for autographics.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, item 7D, the library contract renewal approval request for Midwest Tape Oopla.
Motion sent forward.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7E, the Health Department contract approval request for add-on services through Patagonia Health Systems. Makes a motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other human services tonight?
I just had a question for Carrie. Library roof, I see they're obviously doing the work on there. How far along are they?
I am actually gonna defer that question to Jenny because she is managing that project.
All right.
Pass the buck.
They're like 90% done, so we've got a little bit more work to do. I'm not sure if they'll be in tomorrow to do it or if it'll be early next week, and then we have inspection next week.
Okay, so we're getting close on it. Very good. Thank you.
Any other human services managers this evening? Information only. We did receive the Health Department October Points of Interest. Have a motion to receive.
Motion received and filed.
Support. Baldwin? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion received and filed.
Support. Baldwin? Any... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Samasco?
Present.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Turello?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Sorry.
Any questions? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to citizens to be heard, we have one tonight. Carol Miller.
Hi, everybody. The first thing I'm gonna direct this to Carrie for animal control, and it's not a bad thing. Back when the undersheriff and the sheriff had control of animal control, the front-row group that we called them would always push for TNR. I'm fielding a lot of messages on Facebook on TNR. There's a lot of cats, especially kittens, that are out there now with it getting cold, and people have been asking about TNR. You do have a gal who's very sweet that does post a lot on Facebook. I asked her if there was anything with TNR, I got no reply. So if you could, go back to the animal control and just see if they possibly have that in their envision, because it is upsetting a lot of people, and you see these pictures of little kittens out in the cold while it's gonna pull at your heartstrings. The next one is for Jeff. I want to say first of all, thank you for replying to my email very timely. I had asked last meeting about why the citizens couldn't attend the EDA meetings and that I had called and asked about why we couldn't, and I was very rudely spoken to. You did forward that email and you copied me to Dan Casey. Unsurprisingly, he has not replied, so I don't know if there's any other way that I could get a reply from him other than trying to get ahold of him myself, but that was very disheartening that you replied really fast and he can't reply at all. The last thing I wanted to bring up is the last board meeting. It was very intense with a lot of the people coming to talk about the solar farms that are coming. There were a couple people that had a hard time speaking. One gal that got up and talked, she stood there for a good 45 seconds without saying anything. She was... I thought she was gonna bust out crying. She's a nurse, and as you know, I'm a nurse, but she also has a hobby farm. She also brought up the fact that Commissioner Baldwin, and I'm gonna address this to you, that you had not given meeting minutes for quite some time in the Fort Grashit area. When she said, "Shame on you," people around me were looking at you and made comments on how you laughed and you smirked. That is probably one of the most unprofessional things I've ever seen a Board of Commissioner person do. Shame on you. She's right. Shame on you. I go to my township meetings. I'm finding a lot of things that are wrong. I'm bringing them up. Not one person smirks at me, laughs at me, or anything. In fact, one trustee thanks me after every meeting for coming and bringing out things to show them, but I'm really appalled at how you treated that person, and I think you do owe her a public apology. Thank you, everybody.
Moving on to... Any commissioners have updates? I've got one. I met with both some of the fire chiefs and Tina Bricker. We're going to slow this process down a little bit on encryption due to the fact we've got some questions for the state for if our system is even going to be able to handle the encryption. Right now, we're unaware if we add this to our system, will it log the system down and bog it and keep it from working on heavy call. Right now, it's in front of the state engineers right now that are fully aware of our situation, and so if there's any questions about working on the grant for radios, and until we know we can do encryption, there's really no rush on trying to buy radios until we know we can do the encryption. And with one of the state directors did state that all of our users have to be 100% behind encryption, and right now we have multiple departments in the fireside that don't want encryption, so that means we cannot encrypt until we have 100% buy-in. So until that question's answered, encryption's gonna be on a halt. So just to give everybody an update on the radios, so... Yes, Jeff?
Are they running into problems statewide with this, other... That have went to encryption?
No, because some of them have larger bandwidths and more... We're limited on the number of talk groups we have because of our system. So, and if you have a smaller community, you have less volume traffic on the... And right now, we need to make sure our infrastructure can handle it. Yes, sir.
Is that the only issue, Dave, on the impetus for the radios Jeff was talking about a while back, and some of the fire departments needing, quote, "upgraded radios"? Is encryption the only outdated piece of that equipment request, or is there other parts of that that are...
The reason, because some of the older props that are still working cannot be encrypted. That's why they... And some of the fire departments want 100% new, even if some of their radios can be encrypted. That's another thing. The chiefs still haven't agreed on what type of radio, how many do you give per department, even for a request.
I guess my question, though, maybe I didn't state it well, you know, this idea of bringing some of these outdated radios up to more modern terms, is it only the encryption that is the issue that's pretty... Otherwise, they're fine, it's just lack of encryption. Okay. Thank you.
It's not gonna improve. Encryption won't improve communications.
I didn't know if they needed radios, different megahertz, or whatever the problems were, if it's just encryption. I know that was a big part of it.
That's the huge part of it.
You're saying until they get on the same page with encryption and have capacity, you can't really go forward with a record.
Correct. It's in the state's hands right now, so we're gonna learn more about it. I'll keep trying to update everybody as soon as we get more information. Right now, they wanna try and crypt the police first, but after talking with the chair of the police chiefs association, and that they're really not that close for the... They talked about a April rollout, and the state's really trying to say, until everybody, every radio for the police side is ready to go, they won't even... We can't do one department, not the other. So they have to be all ready to go.
I'm assuming the police chiefs are aware of that also?
Yes.
Okay, good, because I did receive a call from St. Clair looking for some assistance. So I can circle back. Thank you.
Two questions.
Sure.
Do you have approximate timeframe you're gonna get an answer from the state?
No.
Okay. Will this affect mutual aid potentially if we have something in Macomb County and St. Clair County?
No. No, because Macomb's not encrypted. Lapeer is, and what they do is they put a patch in for the departments... No, not at all.
Can I say something?
Sure.
The... I'm gonna feel bad if I don't say this, but it's not gonna be sad. The... Sometimes you have a case of people add two and two together, come up with seven, and that's what just happened to Commissioner Baldwin. She got blasted for something that is just completely false. So she was a... As you all know, she was the supervisor at Fort Grashit. She left when she got appointed here, and then they asked her to come back as the person in charge of planning left. And we represent Fort Grashit, which is why I know this, and she contacted me before the last meeting, and she's dealing with the solar farm situation, notices, and all the requirements, and discovered the minutes were, I wouldn't say hopelessly behind, but pretty bad. And she said... I said, "You know, it's not your fault. All you can do is the best you can do, try to catch them up." And they were draft minutes, and all they needed were the attachments to go with it. And so she said, "Well, I'm probably gonna get blamed for this." And I said, "Well, you probably will, but there's nothing you can do about it." So sure enough, it came up at the meeting. She didn't smirk at anybody. She looked down and smiled. And I looked at her, and she was smiling, and I thought, well, she was right. And so to come up here and say that she smirked at somebody, she wouldn't give them records, well, she can't give them records she doesn't have, and she wasn't smirking at anybody. She was just smiling about the fact that she was right and I was wrong. She would get blamed for it, even though, even though she didn't have the job to produce the minutes.
And I wouldn't have, I don't know what happened with those minutes. I wasn't there at the time. I didn't have access to post those minutes on the website because that wasn't my role. I did, actually, I was caught very off guard. I've been doing, I've been elected for over 10 years, and it wasn't about the minutes. It was when I was accused of taking kickbacks on an issue that I can't even vote on, that I lost my poker face. So, yes, well, you addressed me specifically. I'm addressing you back specifically. So, so that's, but so I, I.
I can't speak to the, whatever. I'm not going to say anything more.
Okay.
Let's move the meeting on. Any more updates from the Judiciary Public Safety? Moving on to, we have no conceptual initiatives or old business, moving on to new business. Emergency Management Performance Grant Approval.
Motion to send to full board.
Support.
Any questions on this one? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Addendum to the 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant American Rescue Plan Agreement.
I'll make a motion to move it to full board. Support. Baldwin.
Any questions? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to Homeland Security Advisory Council membership.
I'll make a motion to move that to full board.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Judge Armstrong's courtroom renovations.
Motion sent to full board.
Support. Baldwin.
Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 2024 Mental Health Court Grant Program Contract.
Make a motion to send to full board. Support. Baldwin.
Any questions? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 2024 Recovery Court Grant Agreement Approval.
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Any questions on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 24 Raise the Age Grant Agreement Approval.
Make a motion to move that to full board. Support.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 2024, 2324 Child Care Fund Budget.
Make a motion to send to full board.
Support.
Any questions? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Courts Contract Extension Approval with Vente Software.
Make a motion to move it to full board. Support. Baldwin.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Sheriff's Contract for Police Services with the Township of Fort Grashit.
Make a motion to send to the full board. Support.
Oh, any questions? Let me ask that one.
Just one. I appreciate J and K, the sheriff and the township charter townships and everybody that contracts with their sheriff department. It really benefits all our citizens like what they do out in Memphis. Just appreciate them working with our townships and giving them the service they need.
It really, it makes it feel like it's your own department. They really get enmeshed in the, in the community.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Sheriff's Contract for Police Services for the Charter Township of East China.
Make the motion.
Support.
Any questions on this one? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Any other judiciary or public safety matters?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I went to the courthouse the other day, and I know that the elevator's still out. An adjustment on the hearing aid. Do we know, was there a timeline on the contract when the scope of work, like when it was supposed to be finished?
So the original contract and extension was done because the parts weren't received. And our current contract does expire the end of November. I know our Buildings and Grounds Director is trying to contact the elevator department company daily. Unfortunately, they have not been on site as much as we would like them to be. They'll start some work and then they go work on another job. So we've been trying to work through that. We do know it's, it's been a big issue over there, and we're trying to get that remedied as fast as possible.
Thank you.
Can you get a motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Thank you. Commissioner Vandembosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Samasco.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Present.
Commissioner Turello.
Here.
We have a call.
Seeing no additions or additions, deletions or changes to the agenda, can I get a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support. Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens, I don't have any citizens wishing to be heard this evening. Is there any updates? Seeing none? Any conceptual initiatives?
None.
Thank you. There's no old business. Moving to new business, item 7A, 2024, 2028 Capital Improvement Program.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7B Metropolitan Planning Commission Appointment.
I just want to let you know that I will be abstaining from this vote.
Make a motion, send to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
Why are you abstaining?
Mark is my boyfriend. We live together, and there would be a perceived conflict of interest.
Pretty good reason.
You know, the stipend that he makes, if he is appointed, would really change our lives.
Will you tell us privately if you recommend him or not, at least?
Yeah, we can talk offline.
Thanks, Lisa. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7C, the Survey and Remonumentation Grant Application, 2024.
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7D, Contract Approval Request for State Turello Landfill Materials and Delivery, and I will abstain from from this one.
I'd make a motion to send to the full board.
Second.
Should I ask why?
It's not her boyfriend, do you?
So any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7E, Contract Approval Request for Asphalt Trucks and Company, which is landfill materials and delivery.
Make a motion, send to full board.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7F, Contract Approval Request for JADC Enterprises Incorporated Doing Business Day as Danny's Transport Incorporated Landfill Materials and Delivery.
Motion sent to full board.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7G, Resolution 23-29, 2023 Annual County At-Large Drain Assessment.
Motion.
Support. Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7H, Resolution 23-35, Supporting the Submission of a Grant Application to the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Legacy Fund.
Make a motion.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just, I was going to say, if you guys aren't familiar with the Ralph Wilson Foundation, you'll see that name a lot. Ralph was the foreigner, former owner of the Buffalo Bills, and when he passed, all the proceeds from the sale of the bills, which was 1.2 billion, actually went to the foundation. It's got, I think, a 20-year spend down on it. First couple of years of the grant actually made money. They didn't even spend all the interest on it. So actually Nancy Windsor sits on their board. We receive a lot of funding via through this, so it's a heck of a funding mechanism that exists to assist with a lot of the bike trail projects.
Waterways, bike trails.
Yeah, you guys just got a bunch of it, too, in Marine City. 400,000, 500,000, something like that. So just want to share some of that information with you.
My only question was, how many, is this the first, or how many grants have we gotten from Wilson to the county specific? I know there have been several, especially in the cities, but. Yes. Okay. I didn't think so. Yes. Okay. Thank you. That's exciting, because I thought they were more city focused, that it was more urban areas that they were focused on, I think, when they first started to give out grant dollars. So very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7I, the North Channel County Park Recommendation for Demolition of Two Structures, and also I will abstain from this vote as well.
Make a motion, send to the full board.
Support. Baldwin.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question. How are we doing on the development, on the architecture and, because that came across my phone this week?
So things are starting to progress with the North Channel Park. Their demolition is the first phase of getting the park ready for users, so creating access to the property. There's other things that are at play here with an adjacent property and some other things that we're working on, but we also tried to adjust our master plan based on that, getting prepared for the work that we hope to get completed in Phase 1A, which would be in 2024, which would be a parking lot and the trailhead. Those were projects funded by the trust fund grant, so that it's already been approved, so that we're going to take ground running in early 2024. So starting to progress quickly now.
So you're going to do the demolition in, and then straight on to the?
Correct. So there's two, two properties, two houses on the property that we need to demo, and that's the first step, getting them removed from the property, making the property safe so that people that want to access can do so. Phase 1 is just baby steps, but it's the parking lot and trailhead, and then we'll start progressing into others. We have a couple of our trust fund grants out. Hopefully, that will be successful at getting, that will help us with Phase 1A or 1B. So a lot of progression, I hope, in 24.
When's your target for the demolition?
Hopefully this year. So if we can get it done before December, that's our hope. That's the plan right now. I've been told that that's a possibility of getting it done, so we're trying to make this progress quickly.
Because I have heard that we're going to be down using it for training for our fire departments, salt water, rescue.
So if things aren't impeded, we would like to do that and allow the first responders to practice on those two houses.
Thank you, sir.
The Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Did we vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we? I think we did.
No. No, you're not saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. How soon I forget. So I do have a motion discussion. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item 8, Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Make a motion, receive and file.
Support. Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, any other environmental public works matters this evening? None. Information only, the monthly park and recreation.
Make a motion, receive and file.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Receive and file packets?
Make a motion to receive and file packets? Support. Baldwin.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Adjourned. Motion carries.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Could I have a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Samasco.
Present.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Turello.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Well, I'm seeing that apparently I'm the only one that has to take their glasses off to read this fine friend. Seeing no additions or deletions, could I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. We have one citizen wishing to be heard. Libby Pro.
Good evening. Okay, Apex, I have to be really fast because I know three minutes. Apex is the driving force behind the House bills 5120 to 5123 and Senate bills 585 through 588. These are, those are the bills that the Lansing is looking at regarding the state really These are, those are the bills that the Lansing is looking at regarding the state really having control over local zoning when it comes to wind and solar. So, this is interesting. Apex is a Virginia company, which is owned by Ari's Capital, which is a California company, who owns SSG Alternative Investment, which is a Hong Kong-based company. So, you kind of see where I'm headed with this. This is really convoluted, and Apex is really behind the push. They're up in Lansing lobbying as we speak. These bills up in Lansing are money grab for big energy, and they continue to leave behind the local communities. Now, we have, you know, Ranger Energy wanting to destroy nine hundred and thirteen acres of farmland in Fort Grashit, whose salesman a few weeks ago, cute little guy, looked about twelve years old, a few weeks ago, compared wind and solar to agriculture because it harvests energy. That's insulting. I mean, I get where he's trying to come from, but, you know, we don't want to hear from salesmen. We want to hear from environmentalists. We want to hear from engineers. We want to hear from the people that are being affected by this, because nobody really seems to care about that. So, it's insulting, and it's more insulting than the kind of rhetoric that we've been listening to from some of you, not all of you. You can control it, or it can control you. Well, don't we control all of this through our master plans already? We don't, I'm not threatened by them, that our master plans aren't good enough to take care of what we're doing. I don't think we're as dumb as some of you seem to think we are out here in St. Clair County, because we don't look good on paper. Even the Obama administration's Clean Power Plan suggests that this type of legislation might reduce global temperatures by a mere one one-thousandth of a degree by the year twenty-one hundred. So, what are we asking all of these people, like the people we saw a few weeks ago up here crying, about their entire lifestyle and culture being seized from them? Why are we doing this? Why would we even entertain the idea of letting this go through? So, Jeff, a few weeks ago, you said that you would support ninety-nine percent of the businesses that want to come to St. Clair County. That makes you reckless. That's why you should not be in this position. Because ninety-nine percent of the businesses that want to come here don't belong here. Not all of them. I embrace a lot of them coming in. You did a brilliant job with Magna. I'm a huge supporter of Magna. But I can't forget the Planton K-Pak. I can't forget the Jeff Kotaske debacle. Can't forget the Wrigley Center. Can't forget the Eddie Center. You've got a lot of stuff to clean up. Let's focus on that before we bring in warm ass. Thank you.
All right, we'll be moving on to updates. I have a couple. Does anybody else have updates? We're gonna be addressing this. Jeff, you got an email addressed to you and me from the supervisor, Jim Anders. I met with, called Jim Anders personally and told him my intent, and he sent in a letter to Carrie also in regards to the one million dollars, from my understanding, and Bill Hazelton from our road commission. I met with him on Monday at ten AM, and he's gonna be providing the exact programs and talk to each supervisor in each township for the projects that can potentially be used with this one million dollars for Clean Water Act. That will save the townships from having to do any reporting themselves. So, Bill Hazelton's gonna get the entire projects, and they'll be getting dollar amounts for each township that will free up out of their general fund that they would have had to do match programs with the road commission like they normally do. So, I think Bill Hazelton's gonna have it all covered. He's jumping on it, and it's gonna be, I think, very good for District Six. And then, of course, that, talking to Jim, he's concerned about monies, and all of this has to be done before the projects by twenty-twenty-four, if I'm correct, and then spent by twenty-twenty-six. So, that's gonna all fit into the programs with each township, and he can work with the townships to find out when they're gonna be using those monies. So, I wanted to bring that up, 'cause we're gonna be bringing up other ARPA stuff, so... You guys got any questions on me on that?
I just think the concern for those guys was the reporting piece of it. Correct me if I'm wrong. The reporting piece of it was the concern for the townships.
Townships will have to do zero, coming one hundred percent from the county road commission, and he'll be providing all the information to us and Carrie Eppening, of course.
Question. Carrie, do we have a person on board to assist with that, the consultant for the ARPA review? Is that, how close is that, or where's that at?
Hopefully, December, we received, or I don't know if it'll be ready for next week. We were hoping that, but we did just receive a draft contract this week from our chosen vendor. We did interviews, so we are very close.
By the first of the year, maybe, or shortly thereafter?
Yeah, definitely by next month at the latest.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bill Hazelton will have me a documented list for proposed projects before November is over, so I'll have it. You'll probably get a copy of it, and then potentially talk about it at our December meeting.
Carrie, one other question. Would that consultant then be used by the county to also vet proposals, or do you do that just internally and leave their help to, say, townships that request it?
For the most part, they'll be working with the commissioner with their district projects. You know, if we come across something internal that we need a little help on, we would certainly utilize them for that as well.
Cover that service as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other updates? No conceptual initiatives, no old business. Moving on to seven A. Resolution twenty-three thirty-two, budget adoption for twenty-twenty-four.
Make a motion, Senate, full board.
Second. All right, discussion, please.
Good evening. At your place, I did hand out the budget document. It's also on the agenda on the website. So, this is the two thousand twenty-four general fund proposed budget. We are presenting a balanced budget again. Revenues and expenditures are seventy-one million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars. That's a four point six-six percent increase from the prior year. I'm gonna go over some of the budget highlights. There is a page in the document with all of the proposed highlights. We are estimating a five percent increase in property taxes, a five percent increase in county revenue sharing from the state.
So, can I, while you're right there, five percent, so the total we're seeing is a four point four, four point five million? That's the total?
For revenue sharing?
Yeah.
Yep, it's four point four nine.
Yeah, okay.
A three percent wage increase for all employees. That represents about sixty-six percent of the budgeted expenditures. An increase to the pension contribution of two percent, which will now be up to thirty percent of eligible payroll. A three percent increase in retirement healthcare, which will bring that up to nine percent of eligible payroll. We are seeing a decrease again in healthcare, one point six percent, which we weren't expecting that.
So, the... 'Cause we're self-insured.
Yes.
And a lot of times, we're realizing the savings on being self-insured. In the last couple of years, I don't even think we've had any increases, when all these other organizations were seeing eight, ten, you know, however many percent. So, we've been very, you know, lucky on that, the healthcare increases, decreases in this respect.
Yeah. An additional appropriation to the convention center for operations of a hundred and fifty thousand. Two hundred thousand dollar appropriation to the insurance fund, as we're seeing some increases in liabilities, and also our share back from MMRMA for risk management has kind of decreased over the years. So, that'll help offset that. A million dollar contribution to the road commission, that's up a hundred thousand from the prior year. Due to new legislation that started October first, we are gonna reduce the childcare fund appropriation by seven hundred thousand. The reimbursement rate was going from fifty percent up to seventy-five percent due to the juvenile justice reforms. We are gonna add seventy-five thousand to the Marine Division budget for next year for operations and equipment. There will still be a budgeted contingency of two hundred and thirty thousand. And then, on the third page, there's several manning table changes for next year. There's an increase in part-time hours for accounting and MSU extension, a new part-time account clerk one for animal control for office support. For the prosecuting attorney, they have requested a new senior APA due to an increase in appeals cases. Reclassification of a HR generalist to an HR specialist. An increase in the wage rate for district court probation crew chiefs. They're being moved off the temp scale onto a permanent scale. Reclass of wages for the maintenance department for their skilled workers, for the HVAC and electrician. Reclassification of the part-time deputy clerk two to a full-time deputy clerk two. Does anyone have any questions on that presentation?
I have a comment, 'cause Steve was here in the good old days.
We're both old, Jeff. Go ahead.
Well, the budget, it's just between Carrie and you, and it started with Carrie and Bill Coffin back in the day, and these things have gotten so smooth, and they, I can always tell you, they were not that way. It was...
We came on at a bad time. That was, the economy went down. We were in the mode of preserving services and cutting because of the loss in revenues because of the bubble that burst, you know. So, it's different now, for sure.
Yeah, so, kudos to you guys.
Yep, and next month, I'll be bringing the two thousand twenty-three general fund and special revenue fund budget adjustments, and the special revenue, twenty-twenty-four special revenue fund budgets.
Yes, Steve. Speaking of the good, speaking of the good old days, we did the convention center several years ago, and I did not support that, because it was proposed to operate at a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year annual loss in the nature of, you know, economic development or tourism. And then I see we're giving a hundred and fifty thousand additional for operational costs. And you may not be able to tell me now. You can get, send me an email. I'm curious where we're at. Is the convention center, still we backfill that substantially? Is that still true?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other question, the one fifty, what is it that requires the one fifty as an additional operating cost to something that's already costing us two hundred and fifty thousand a year? What are they, what are we doing?
So, we're phasing out the other funding, and the expenses do not meet, or the revenues don't meet the expenditures that they have, so we have to fill that gap.
So, we're losing more than what was projected perhaps fifteen years ago when they built it? Is that kind of the upshot?
It's about the same every year.
So, the funding mechanism that was tied to the convention center, they're shifting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that funding mechanism to the general fund?
Correct.
The county funding mechanism. So, it's just, it's kind of a, an accounting procedure, so...
Is that...
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
I just got a couple comments. Anybody have any more questions for?
I might in a minute.
I'm sorry, what?
I might in a minute. Go ahead. I might, I might have something, but I'm still thinking. Go ahead.
Okay. I want to bring up the county road appropriations. Of course, I brought that up, I don't know, half a year ago approximately. I really appreciate the one million dollars. For those that aren't aware, our townships, twenty-three townships, have a very good working relationship with their county road commission, so it's a dollar for dollar, which means if they only gave a dollar, that would be two million additional, or two million dollars that will be spent on the township roads. But the townships put approximately two and a half dollars to one, so we're actually getting three and a half million dollars for our townships, and I do appreciate the million. It was about that when I was a township supervisor back in two thousand four. Then it got dropped to five hundred thousand for numerous reasons, loss of revenue. But now it's back to a million dollars, just like our seventy-one million exceeds what we, the loss we had, and what we actually had in two thousand ten, which I believe was sixty-two million. Dropped about ten million. Now, we're above and beyond that, so...
Just like that on the road commission, we are one of eleven counties, if I'm not mistaken, that contribute, that puts money into this funding mechanism, so out of the eighty-three counties, we're one of eleven that actually...
Yeah, I had to work with LaPirre County on an issue, now representing St. Clair County, and they don't play very nice with their townships over there. So, it's very hard for the townships over there in North Branch to get some work done on the roads, so... All right, we have a motion and a...
No, may I ask one more question? I just wanted to make sure it wasn't covered in here somewhere else before I asked. I know that there's been a lot of conversation about FOIA, and especially now with body cams and that type of thing. So, one request recently, it was seven hundred photos and hours and hours between multiple deputies of reviewing video, because certain parts have to be redacted. It's audio, it's video, and photos, and I know that your office has been inundated, and as laws change, and we have more, you know, just emails, but especially the audio/video, is there any conversation about, because it has to be done right, and at this point, I think we're almost at a place where we probably need a person who's just dedicated to it on some levels, but I don't know where, I don't know how many other departments. I know admin is, you're completely inundated with it sometimes. I know the sheriff's office is. I would assume other departments are as well, but it's not getting easier to fulfill the requests. And, you know, so most people, especially if it's a large request, are okay with a little more time, but it's a five-to-ten-day turnaround, it's supposed to be, so I don't know if we just need to give some thought to that.
There's nothing in the current budget for that, but there is the contingency, so if something did change in the next, you know, few months, and we went that direction, the board's contingency could cover that.
Thank you.
Just a notice that the MSU extension, because of the extremely upgrade in who's running the department, they get the increase. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're gonna move on to seven B. Resolution twenty-three twenty-six, waiving investment interest earned on taxes collected by local units. Motion.
Support, Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Resolution twenty-three thirty-five, relative to predimes for boards and commissions. So moved.
Support, Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Seven D, contract renewal approval request, Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated.
Make a motion, send it to the full board. Baldwin?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Seven E, information technology contract approval request, Enacom TSG.
Make a motion, Senate, to full board. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Resolution twenty-three dash thirty, adopting eighty-twenty cost-sharing model. Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Seven G, twenty-twenty-four pension and retiree healthcare contribution rates.
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Seven H, Blue Cross Blue Shield Annual Renewal.
Make a motion to move it to full board. Support, Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Seven I, contract approval request, twenty-twenty-four resus service agreement.
Make a motion, send it to the full board. Support, Baldwin.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Seven J, Commissioner Baldwin, District Two, American Rescue Plan Project, Birchville Township Fire Department.
I'd make a motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Seven K, Commissioner Baldwin, District Two, American Rescue Plan Project, Fort Grashit Fire Department.
I would also make a motion to send that to the full board.
Support again.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seven L, Commissioner Rushing, District Six, American Rescue Plan Project, revised request, Casco Township.
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
I have a second. This is a request from Joe Stevens. He called me supervisor of Casco Township, and it falls within the guidelines. When we initially did the half a million, I had all the townships give a approved list, or a list that would be approved by Carrie Eppening's office, and they changed their mind on one of their items and want to do a covert instead, so that's what this is. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. This time, do we have any other Ways and Means Matters? Yes, Steve?
As Jeff was taking us down, you know, the history here, we have Kathleen Wheelhand. When I was here fifteen, twenty years ago, Kathleen sat through almost all of our meetings. She's here again tonight, and she came up and said hi and reminded me that, how long she'd been here, and I just want to say thanks for coming. That's all.
She's not even yelling at us this time.
No, she didn't. She's not yelling at us. That's good.
No, I was just being a wise guy.
Carrie, and my, I should note, but who was prior to her that was doing the job?
Prior to Dina?
Yes.
Danielle.
Okay, Danielle. And you haven't made an error that I've caught, but I did find a one-dollar error that I got ribbed on, but I wanted to bring that up. When I went through the whole budget and you found, no, you haven't made a mistake. You had a one-dollar error one year. You'll see the budget when we get through it. It gets much thicker and went through the whole thing. Just a little funny. Do we have any other Ways and Means Matters? All right, nine, information-only city report hearing, obsolete property rehabilitation act, district Oprah assumption certificate. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion, receiving, file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Baldwin?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stand adjourned.